This meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. I want to welcome everybody here today. We've got a full house, so I don't know whether everybody agrees now that they come at 5:30 and just now heard about it and decide to show up, or there's a special interest item on the agenda people want to have some great passion about. I think it's probably the latter one, but we'll find out here very soon. Mayor Prodim, do you have any introductions?
Yes, sir, I think I'll introduce everyone individually, but not today.
Our invocation today would be by Pastor Jesse Lyles of the Will Hills Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Blair.
Join me in prayer. Father God, what a great day it is to be here to celebrate the freedoms we have. And Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are very much aware and have a growing awareness of how great it is to live in this country when we can come and express our opinions about things without threat of any kind. Thank you, Lord, for that. Thank you, Lord, for this group who have already done some business behind the scenes and talked about things, and today's a voting time. And thank you, Lord, for the passions of various people, even the pickleballers who come out here tonight. We thank you, Lord, that you give us those freedoms here. And we thank you for your leadership and your guidance here tonight, as we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman LaZelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Chiswick.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City Manager, do you have any announcements?
No public announcements, Mayor.
We have two proclamations. Read A, please.
Item A, proclaiming support for increased public awareness of human trafficking. And I'm not sure if representatives, but I think Chief Monahan will accept.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. Would you like to stand right here? Thank you. Proclamation supporting increased awareness related to human trafficking. Whereas, human trafficking is a modern-day form of slavery involving the illegal trade of people for exploitation or commercial gain. And whereas, every year, millions of men, women, and children are trafficked in countries around the world, including the United States. And whereas, it is estimated that human trafficking generates billions of dollars of profit per year, second only to drug trafficking as the most profitable form of transnational crime. Whereas, human trafficking is a hidden crime, as victims rarely come forward to seek help because of language barriers, fear of the traffickers, or fear of law enforcement. And whereas, traffickers use force, fraud, coercion, to lure their victims and force them into labor or commercial sex, sexual exploitation. They look for people who are susceptible for a variety of reasons, including psychological or emotional vulnerability, economic hardship, lack of a social safety net, national disasters, or political instability. The trauma caused by the traffickers can be so great that many may not identify themselves as victims, or even ask for help, even in highly public settings. And whereas, a human trafficking forum will be held in Yavapai County on April 27th, 2016, to provide further education on the issues surrounding human trafficking, and the nursery rhymes video will be publicly released for the first time at this event. And whereas, the city of Prescott is supportive of the many efforts underway in Yavapai County, including the production of the nursery rhymes music video, to bring awareness to the issue of human trafficking. Now, therefore, I, Harry Oberg, Mayor of Prescott, do hereby proclaim the city of Prescott's support for increasing public awareness of human trafficking. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Hello, I'm... Let's see. Let's try. Good afternoon.
One more time. Here, why don't you use this one?
Good afternoon. My name's Gayla Kling. I'm Deputy Director of Yavapai County Juvenile Court. I'm here on behalf of Director Scott Mayberry. Just want to thank you all for your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you for all of you.
Item B, proclaiming April 10 through the 16th, 2016, as National Telecommunications Week.
Do we have people from the telecommunications area? Come on up. Everybody. Nice work, Mark. Is this thing on? Okay. Proclamation, this is the National Telecommunications Week, which is April 10th through the 16th. Whereas, the professional public safety communication specialist plays a vital and crucial role in the protection of life and property, preservation of public order, and assurance of every man, woman, and child, helping to save countless lives in responding to emergency calls, dispatching emergency professionals and equipment, and providing moral support to citizens in distress in the city of Prescott, the city of Prescott of Arizona. Whereas, the city of Arizona and the city of Prescott is fortunate to have dedicated communication specialists who work in police and fire communication centers to provide the dispatch, emergency response capabilities for fire and police emergencies and medical services. Whereas, the public safety communication specialist is, in many situations, the first and only contact that a citizen or emergency personnel may have with a public safety agency. Now, therefore, I, Harry B. Oberg, Mayor of Arizona, Mayor of Prescott, in order to acknowledge that dedication and professionalism of communication specialists throughout the city, do hereby recognize the week of April 10th through the 16th as National Communications Week. Congratulations. Any words? You guys do this for a living.
Only when it's on the phone. No, we thank you very much. These are some of our fire and police dispatchers. I have the privilege of being part of supervising our regional communication center, and I'll tell you that the work they do, unbelievable. I could never manage the four or five screens that they're looking at, and the telephones and the radios going off. Unbelievable job they do to keep our firefighters, our officers, safe, and to get public safety to where it needs to go. So, we very much appreciate everything they do. Thank you.
Presentations. Presentation by Prescott Pickleball Association regarding development of courts at Pioneer Park.
Okay. Going to behave? Maybe not. Okay. My name is Peg Travers, and I am here representing the Prescott Pickleball Association. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, we want to start off first, and most importantly, by thanking you all for your service. We know it's a tough job that you do. We know you have to make very, very difficult decisions every day. This one's going to be a very easy one. So, I'd also like to show you how many people in the audience are here on behalf of pickleball. Would you please stand? Thank you. The gentleman in the red down there, that's Bob Atherton. He is the USAPA Regional Director for this area. And Jerry Northwood is the Yavapai County Team Leader. So, we are here to do something for the city of Prescott. We realize the financial situation that Prescott is in, and so we are not here to seek money. We are only here to seek endorsement for a very worthy project. Pickleball. How many people up there have played pickleball? I know Billy has. We've got a couple of potentials there. It is a 50-year-old sport, 50-year-old sport, but it is the fastest-growing sport in the United States today. People 9 to 990 play pickleball. It's exploding. Do you realize that there are 100,000 people turning 65 today, every day? So, the largest block of people playing pickleball are the 55 to 65, and there are 234 courts built every month in the United States. Pickleball affects tourism even in Europe. Kids are important. We all know that. And Prescott is one of the few cities in the United States right now with an active children's program for pickleball. And we were talking about that. There's so much potential for pickleball for veterans. We have some people working with veterans. We have people working with children. And we have, this gentleman over here just made a mission to the American Samoa and trained 1,000 kids. He brought the nets. He brought the balls. He brought the paddles. So, it's not just for adults, and it's not just for seniors. It's also for children. And we all are pickleball volunteers. That's what we're doing here. So, I happen to be a USAPA Ambassador. We promote the sport. We teach lessons. We promote good health, and most importantly, we promote fair play. We want to promote Prescott community projects through this pickleball effort, and we have over 1,000 players. As you can see, this is just a snapshot of what we have in the Prescott area for players. We also want to promote tournaments and fundraising. So, we'll get right to the point here. We have a problem. Prescott doesn't have any public courts. And if you look around you at the other cities, they do. But we know financially it's not going to work for us to ask you for a large amount of money for pickleball courts right now. But we have been working very diligently behind the scenes with Mr. Baines, and we've identified a spot, that little lonely spot up in the upper right-hand corner. That's Pioneer Park, which is a beautiful complex. I was out there today, and it really needs some pickleball courts out there. Yay! So, the city of Prescott Recreation Services has identified Pioneer Park as a viable place for some courts. Why do we want to do this? We want to promote family involvement. And if you go down to Surprise, their public courts on a Saturday morning, you'll see families playing, kids playing, old people playing, everybody's playing on their eight courts altogether. We want to promote Prescott events. We love Prescott, and we feel that this would be a wonderful thing to have available in Prescott. We want to invest in our community. And, most importantly, we want to make Prescott a pickleball destination. So, this is a couple of our players that have played in a tournament. Tournaments are a lot of fun, and they bring money into wherever they're conducted. Surprise has a gazillion of them, and they're just ending their pickleball season because it's in the winter. And we really need a summer pickleball tournament area. Pickleball, like most other sports, I know you see this with softball, the average spend is $200 a day for food and lodging. Obviously, people come to Prescott, they spend money, so the local businesses benefit. And for us, it would be wonderful to recognize Prescott as a summer destination for pickleball. I can tell you, we've got a gentleman, you want to just raise your hand, he just came from Kentucky. He says, "Where's the pickleball here?" It affects home sales, it affects resales, it affects rentals. So, this would also further develop Pioneer Park, which is a beautiful complex. Our proposal, that we develop a private-public project to fund this and implement it. Yavapai County provides the site at Pioneer Park, like they have with other ventures, a joint city council facility. The PPA, that's us, will raise the funding, award, and manage the construction contract. And the preliminary estimates are it's about $170,000 for eight courts. City Recreation Services will clear the site and provide in-kind support, and City Recreation Services will provide ongoing maintenance for this facility, just as they do to others. So, my goal, which I'm told is crazy, but we want to be able to play in a year. That's where it is. It's right off, it's right across the street from the hockey rink. It's a vacant spot, so it would look lovely with courts there. And our progress year-to-date, we've spoken to the Arizona Community Foundation and identified them as a viable vehicle for our 501(c)(3) funding. We have spoken to companies for construction. We want to do this right. We need to make sure that our courts are beautiful, so we're talking to people who make these courts. We've identified local engineering, and actually, I was on the phone today with Kelly Wise. And on endorsement from you, we will begin fundraising. So, please endorse this project. We are eager and willing to do something for the city of Prescott that will be very, very positive. And we will start fundraising immediately, and we will work with City Recreation Services to get pickleball in Prescott. Any questions?
Questions, comments from the council?
I have one.
Councilwoman Orr has one first.
Peg, I just want to thank you for your leadership in this. I want to thank all of the pickleball group. As you can tell, they're very high-energy, extremely social. It's a fun, healthy, just such a great community of pickleball players, which I know will just multiply exponentially as we start getting our courts. And I just want to thank you for the leadership and all the work that's been done. I also want to recognize Joe Baines for his willingness to sit and talk. And I remember last year, I just went in and said, "Joe, can we talk about pickleball courts?" He goes in and he pulls out this big file about pickleball. I said, "Yes," because he realizes the potential also. So, thank you all for coming, and thank you for the work that you're doing, and the work that you will be doing. I will tell you, if there's a group that can get this done, it's the pickleball group. And I love this, Peg and her, Prescott Pickleball at Pioneer Park. So, we can, and lots of positive feeling about that, so, thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Other question to our city attorney. Park impact fee money. Could this project be used as a match for park impact fee money, knowing that these people sitting out here are going to raise money, they're new to the community, we don't have the facility, and it's an impact to our community? Would that suffice for impact fee money? I knew you would hesitate.
I think you'd have to establish, you know, just like we talked about for the playground. I mean, it's the same analysis that you'd have to do to determine that this is a growth-related, growth-related expenditure from the impact fees. But it's the same analysis as before. I don't have the facts.
We wouldn't have these people in here asking for this service if it wasn't growth-related.
Well, you know...
Can I just say that eight courts is not enough? And we feel that...
I'm trying.
At some point, at some point, you're going to want more. You're going to want more. And there are no amenities built into this project right now. And so, there may be a point at which you want to add a restroom or some running water to this area. So, we figured if we build the courts, they will come, and that's what we're trying to do.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify and, of course, defer to legal, but I did the impact fee study that established the park impact fee. And those impact fees, and any impact fee, cannot be used to add a new service level. And we have no pickleball courts now, so it's not a growth or an expansion option on that what was used.
What if we build one, then can we build the other seven under the impact, because one's not enough?
You'd have to do a new impact fee study and follow the rules there. And the new impact fee law doesn't allow improvements on parks as large as Pioneer Park. It's limited to neighborhood parks.
Okay.
Councilwoman Chiswick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, how do we go about donating to this worthy cause?
What a wonderful question. Thank you very much.
Get your checkbook out.
Yeah. We've hesitated to start a fund because we wanted to get a feel for your acceptance of this project. Because once we start collecting, and we will collect, we've got people back here who have already verbally said, you know, "I'm going to kick in some money." The 501(c)(3) will be formed as soon as we get endorsement, and then we will start going out and raising the funds. So, believe me, I've got your name on my list now.
All right. I'll make sure that, at some point, you come over.
Thank you.
City Manager, if we're going to move forward on this, what has to be done?
Well, Mayor and Council, as Ms. Travers has indicated, the association is seeking the endorsement of the council to proceed with project development and subsequent approvals by Yavapai County and the city of Prescott, which jointly oversee the Pioneer Park facility. So, just with a general endorsement of the city council this evening, it's not a formal vote, it's just proceed, understanding that project development is required, that building permits will be required, that Yavapai County authorization or approval will be required, and that at some point, there will probably be, similar to the Mueller Park, an agreement coming back to the city council, setting forth the respective responsibilities and understandings.
So, do I have a consensus of the council to endorse this?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
We endorse. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Okay. Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on April 5th, 2016, and April 12th, 2016. Item B, award of city contract number 2016-213 to Plan B Facility Services for Custodial Services in an annual estimated amount of $27,720. Item C, approval to purchase vehicle parts and supplies from Napa Auto Parts using State of Arizona Contract Number ADSP-016-129364 pricing on an as-needed basis. Item D, award of city contract number 2016-268 to United Rentals for the purchase of three Rammer Compactors, Whacker BS-60-4AS, and one Walk Behind Concrete Asphalt Saw, Husqaba FS-520, in a total amount of $15,145.59. Item E, assignment of Trakit Software Maintenance and Support Agreement from CRW Systems Incorporated to Sun Guard Public Sector LLC. Item F, award of city contract number 2016-269 to Econo Light Control Products Incorporated for the sole source purchase of five traffic signal cabinets and controllers and 20 bus interface units in a total amount not to exceed $83,516.18. Item G, award of city contract number 2016-200 to Harrington Planning and Design for Landscape Architects Services for the Carlton and Alarkin Street Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $19,920. Item H, award of city contract number 2016-270 to Mountain State Pipe and Supply for the purchase of encoder receiver transmitters in a total amount not to exceed $76,940, using City of Tucson Contract Number 130679-03 cooperative pricing. Item I, award of city contract number 2016-271 to Badger Meter for the purchase of radio read water meters in a total amount not to exceed $68,990, using City of Glendale Contract Number IFB-14-36 cooperative pricing. Item J, adoption of ordinance number 4971-1509, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement, of public sewer easements from Cornerstone Propane LP and New Bob LLC for the Sixth Street Sewer Main Relocation Project, and authorizing the Mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptances. Item K, adoption of ordinance number 4970-1508, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of drainage easements from Doran Family Trust, Thomas and Elaine Hogan, Edward and Kim Scott, Tamis Anderson, Yavapai Hills Homeowners Association, and Kaspinski Yep Family Trust for the Hummingbird Sunrise Drainage Project, and authorizing the Mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptances. And item L, adoption of number, resolution number 4323-1532, terminating city contract number 2013-149, an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Chino Valley for prosecution services.
Do I have a move to the... No, not on the consent agendas. Okay. Do I have a move to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Do I have a motion and second? Please vote.
That's Miss Lamerson. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move to item two.
Item two, the liquor license consent agenda. Mayor and Council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there are two applications for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License. Item A is JS Acker Park Association, which will be held at the Holiday Courtyard of the Grand Highland Hotel. And item B is Party in the Pines, which will be held at the Mile High Football Field. Also on the consent agenda is an application for a Series 16W Fair Festival Special Event Liquor License, and that is the Superstition Meadery Wine Festival. The applications for these three events have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval. And also, item B did go through the city's Special Event Committee, where the event was approved. And with that, I can ask any questions if you have them.
Any questions, comments from the council? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent items 2A through 2C.
Second.
Do I have a motion? Second, please vote.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll go to the regular agenda. Item A.
Item 3A, introduction and first council public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, 2016 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Isabel Rollins, and this is Jerry Jones of the Citizen Advisory Committee. I work for NACOG, but I've been administering the city's CDBG grants for a little over a year and a half. Prescott receives an annual allocation from HUD for community development projects, and every year, an annual action plan has to be developed to outline where the funding's going. The Prescott Citizens Advisory Committee prioritizes the proposed projects for funding. We started the application process back in November and received 17 applications for funding in February. In early March, the committee met with applicants for a question-and-answer period, and then later that month, the committee met again to rank the proposals. We're expecting to receive $233,755 from HUD, plus there's another $40,774 being reallocated from prior years. Up to 15% of the allocation that the city gets can go to public service projects, which generally goes to nonprofits for operational expenses. The balance of the funding goes to construction projects. And in the past, sometimes the construction funds are used for nonprofit projects, and sometimes the construction funds are used for city projects. You have a list of the proposed projects near Packet, and Jerry, our committee chairman, will say a few words about the committee, and then in, at the next council meeting, we'll be asked to, we'll be back to ask you for final approval of the funding plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. You all have appointed us to be the Citizens Advisory Committee and to make some recommendations to you for where these funds from HUD come from and where they will go. You fund them, and then you get reimbursed for them. And so, our committee takes all the applicants, and this year, we had 17, up half a dozen from the previous year. Unfortunately, $35,000 of that 235 only goes toward public service-type projects.
will say a few words about the committee, and then in, at the next council meeting, we'll be asked to, we'll be back to ask you for final approval of the funding plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. You all have appointed us to be the Citizens Advisory Committee and to make some recommendations to you for where these funds from HUD come from and where they will go. You fund them, and then you get reimbursed for them. And so, our committee takes all the applicants, and this year, we had 17, up half a dozen from the previous year. Unfortunately, $35,000 of that 235 only goes toward public service-type projects, and they had 10 applicants. The construction projects, the balance, we had the other seven. All of these applicants meet the national objectives, and they meet the five-year plan of Prescott and their objectives. And of course, we look at the main thing being transitional housing, what we do for the poor, the hungry, the disabled, the senior citizens, the vets, and that kind of thing. So, after getting these applicants to us, and I'm doing this for the benefit of the new council members that may or may not know how this works, the, we look at the applicants, we interview them right here in this room, we visit some of the jobs, and I visit all the jobs before and after as well, to see how they've handled the funds. As we meet to evaluate these people, they're all nonprofits, and they all need money. And so, we, and even though the number of applicants increases, the amount of dollars does not. So, our job becomes a little more difficult each year to how do we go about doing this? Each one of the members has a say about each of the applicants in our meeting to evaluate. And what we do, we don't all agree at first. We go around and throw out the pros and cons of each, and by the time we get toward the end of it, we do come to a consensus. And the big factor in making the determination is, where is this money going to make the most impact for our community? That's the bottom line. And so, some of them are going to get tossed out, some of them are going to be obviously reviewed, not a problem there, but we can't feed them all. We just can't fund everything. And so, we looked at that impact factor, and by the time we get through, and many of these people have been back two and three times, so we know them pretty well. But we came to a general consensus, and we all agreed unanimously on the public service and the construction projects, so that that's what we're presenting to you, is our recommendations accordingly. And we hope you do take that into consideration, as we have suggested. Thank you. Any questions?
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank both of you with the leadership, you know, the past couple of years, and we've gotten some new people on the, on the committee this year with your leadership, and it's a lot of hard decisions. And as the liaison with the group, I had stood in on a lot of them.
And we thank you for that, Councilwoman Lozelle.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. But I want to thank you and the committee for, it's hard decisions, a lot of worthy causes out there, and, and you make some hard calls, and thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Wait, wait, wait. I think you just have to go to the, go to a public hearing at this meeting, Mayor. That's, we're, we're not, there's no decision on this, just, just a call to the public on this topic. Oh, okay, but you just, Mayor can just open it without it.
Oh, okay. Do I need to close?
After the public hearing, after the people get a chance to speak.
So, I guess what are you asking me to do?
Just call the public for this particular item.
Okay. Okay, open this to the public for any comments?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
And I want to express my thanks also to the Citizens Advisory Group. I know I've worked a lot of budgets in the past, and you get a lot of requirements in, and you always got more requirements than money, and in your particular case, you had a lot of requirements that you knew were very needy, and you really have to make some tough decisions on which ones you're going to select. So, again, I know the entire council appreciates everything you've done. Thank you.
We'll move on to item B.
Item B, approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2015-108A1 with the Prescott Downtown Partnership in the additive amount of $24,000 for the Downtown Summer Concert Series.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Since 2001, City of Prescott has contracted with Prescott Downtown Partnership, Arizona nonprofit, to manage various events and responsibilities in the downtown area. This amendment to the contract would add the responsibility of the Downtown Summer Concert Series to that string of responsibilities. By way of background, I thought this was interesting when I was researching, and so I'll read it. In 1997, the city council approved the downtown specific area action plan, and one of the goals that was outlined in the plan was as follows: Create public-private partnerships within the downtown. The key to reaching the goals for the downtown and effective implementation of the major action items is the creation of a partnership between the city and a private partner that represents the resources and interests of the downtown businesses and landowners. Working together, government and the private sector can accomplish far more downtown than either entity can acting alone. Every desired objective must be examined and determined if it is best attained through partnerships. So, as a result of this plan, the Prescott Downtown Partnership was formed in 2001. Prescott Downtown is, is one of the crown jewels of Prescott. According to the recent visitor survey that was done by NAU, over 64% of the respondents said that that was a venue that they visited. So, we know that our visitors are coming in large part to visit the downtown area. So, since 2011, the city has implemented and managed and put on the Downtown Summer Concert Series. It's weekday entertainment primarily, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, with different genres of music. There's jazz, Prescott Idol on Thursday nights, so kind of a good variety for not only the locals, but the visitors to come and experience downtown with some activities that are going on, and supports the local businesses. As a part of the 2016 budget adjustments, council gave us direction to put some cost-cutting and revenue enhancement adjustments into the general fund. As one of those option four personnel expense reductions have affected the city's ability to manage the Downtown Summer Concert Series, necessitating a contractual partnership in order to continue this amenity. Amendment number one to this contract would add the responsibility of the Summer Downtown Concert Series to the PDP's contract. Included in that would be, one of the large costs is the sound for the events downtown, cost of a DJ, festival insurance, music royalties, staffing for the events, and all those add up to the $24,000. The funding is, has been budgeted for in the FY16 budget in the general fund of $24,000, and is available, and if you have any questions for me, I'm here, and the Prescott Downtown Partnership, Kendall Jaspers, is also here.
Questions, comments from the council? Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it's a question from Mark. Is there a way that this can, the bed tax can pay for this?
Well, I defer to legal. I mean, it is, I guess, tourist-related.
The bed tax can be used for tourism marketing, but our, but the Prescott also sort of expanded it to, you know, recreational activities. I think you could pay for part or all of this with the bed tax, because it is, you know, it's a tourism, can be a tourism function, and also can be considered a recreational-type function, you know, concerts on the square. So, I think part or all of it could be paid for with bed tax, as long as you can justify it as, as related to tourism marketing.
I can justify it, because if, if it's, if it's out of general fund, I can't support it, but if we can go to bed tax, I can support it.
Councilwoman Loz, Will Cox?
Well, I would certainly support using bed tax for this purpose. I think for many people, Thursday and Friday nights are weekend nights, and weekends are when we get the most tourists, but we also want to encourage midweek tourism. So, these events are not just for the benefit of people in the community, they help enhance the tourist experience and get more people coming back to Prescott. So, I think we can justify using bed tax.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, if I remember correctly, and I agree with John, that bed tax was for parks and recreation development and tourism promotion, and this definitely qualifies for both.
Councilwoman Hor?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Kendall and the Downtown Partnership. I know they've put many hours on putting this together, and so I appreciate the work on that, and certainly would support using the bed tax.
City Manager, do we have money in the bed tax?
Mayor, we do indeed. Fiscal year 16 budget for the transient occupancy tax, or what we call the bed tax, included a contingency of $144,000. You recall the recent action of the city council to commit on a dollar-for-dollar match basis, up to $25,500 for the Caleb Mueller Park at Pioneer Park, Playground of Pioneer Park. So, if it's the council's decision to use $24,000 of bed tax, that would still leave in the bed tax budget for the current fiscal year about $100,000 worth of contingency out of a total budgeted amount for the fiscal year of about $942,000.
Councilman Blair?
I'd just like to make a suggestion, and probably fall on deaf ears, which most of my things do, but I appreciate Kendall and PDP, but I'd like to get in the habit of having the opportunity to have some mechanism to pass a bucket, or pass a hat, or a basket for people to give donations down there at these events. That could go to help offset some of the costs, as well as bringing in more events, you know? People just assume they're going to go down there and get everything for free, but I'm one that has gone down there, and if somebody had passed the hat, I would have been more than happy to throw in a $5 bill, or a $2, or some kind of tip to where it would help bring in other amenities later on. So, maybe that's something you guys can think about.
Other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
Well, since we're having mutual admiration, I'd like to thank Joe for his work on this too. Between, this took a bunch of time for, both of us have a pretty good investment in this. And, and just to bring, to talk about the economics of it a little bit, we did a pass on this financially and took our best shot, and this is a good deal for the city. I mean, we're, we think it's going to cost us somewhere around $28,000 to put this on. So, we're asking for, you know, we're asking for 24. We feel like Joe has helped us, and we feel like we've lined up a sponsor to help with, with the rest, and, but, so it's a good bang for the city money. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about finances or anything else.
Okay. Any questions from the council for Kendall? Thank you. Any other comments? I got a thumbs up. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to approve amendment number one to city contracts number 2015-108A1.
Second.
With the recommendation, with the funds coming out of the bed tax.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, did you get that, clerk?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Okay, next item.
Item C, approval of submission of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $1 million for preparation of a comprehensive airport master plan and runway incursion mitigation study for Ernest A. Love Field, Prescott Municipal Airport.
Mayor and Counsel, good afternoon. Yeah, this is in regards to a grant application request, and the city completed an airport master plan in 2008, and subsequently updated that in 2010 to reflect accurate economic, I want to say, a downturn in the economy from, from 2008. The FAA recommends updating a master plan every five to seven years, or if there's any significant impact to the airports, or the desire from the region or the city. The, the economic impact, again, really identifies a lot of elements, not only the physical property of the airport, but also just the, just the impact to the community and, and the entire, you know, airport and the environment, and all the tools that are used as well. So, what we're showing here is, what is the need for an airport master plan, specifically in Prescott? And it was because recently, the airport development has been identified as a focus from the city leadership. And that would create the airport master plan that will propose a detailed plan for future development. The airport master plan also ensures the alignment with state and federal funding agencies. And Mayor, as you recall, you met with the regional and the, the local officials too from the FAA to talk about, you know, potential, the future, the potential for, for the future of the, the airport, excuse me. So, it also ensures proper land use, proper facility use, and desires for the airfield use. As everybody knows, the airport represents about 275,000 flight operations in any given year, and how we can continue to partner with the stakeholders at the airport in order to continue to develop the airport safely, as well as ensure growth of the companies that, that operate out of the airport. There's also some environmental reviews that are necessary, and to revise the existing overflights of aircraft noise contours and the subsequent impact zones. I can identify that further in a map. So, what are the components of the next-generation master plan? Normally, master plans used, run about $350,000 for a very comprehensive master plan that created a future, and, and reaching out to the community, getting those, those ideas back, and making sure that, again, this is something that the entire community and the city council embraces. The new components of the next-generation master plan really includes an electronic version of an airport layout plan. And what an airport layout plan really identifies is, it's a map that depicts basically all of the potential future growth of the airport, extending up to 20 years if possible. The grants are, are not eligible for any projects at the airport unless it's identified on an airport layout plan. So, even when the city council recently approved the siting location for the terminal, unless that was specifically identified in an airport layout plan, that terminal project could not be grant-eligible. So, what an electronic airport layout plan is, is it's something that can provide a very efficient updating of, of the airport layout plan without having to hire consultants and to do an entire new airport layout plan anytime that the city council or the community desires a different look at the airport. So, that's one large component. Another large component is a updated airport geographic information system. So, really, what that will allow is the city to have a much greater identification of all subsurface components, including utilities, above-surface inventory of anything from, gosh, panels of concrete to the lighting system, the signage system, markings, anything that, that is above surface as well, so that it can be adequately identified, and, and if there's any preventative maintenance items that's necessary, those are identified in the airport geographic information system as well. As well as, the FAA will now have the ability to review any plan sets on the, on the Aegis system that, that they can just pull up electronically as well. So, they're going to create a level playing field, if you will. The consultants and engineers will provide this information to the FAA at the request of the, of the airport owner, and, and it's going to be a much more efficient process, if you will, for the FAA to review any plans, any, any future designs for the airport. So, there's another component in here too, and I'll talk in more detail about it, but it's called a runway incursion mitigation. This community was fortunate enough to be one of two communities, cities actually, in the entire region of this airport, of the, of the FAA, to be eligible for a runway incursion mitigation program. And that's an additional component that will be contained within the master plan, that will also be able to identify future potential infrastructure grants. So, it's a new program that the FAA has recently adopted. Again, it's called Runway Incursion Mitigation, RIM for short, and, and it, again, will be able to identify some future potential grants. So, I can show real quick one of the components, again, for the, for the layout plan, as well as for the master plan, and it's a noise contour map. This noise contour map was originally designed and completed in June of 2008. After that, there was a major construction project which actually shifted the primary runway, if you will. So, what you'll see in the noise contour map is, that will actually adjust, if you will, a little bit further to the north. So, that's going to provide some positive... So that's going to provide some positive impacts, if you will, to the area around the golf course and to the south of 89 and Willow Creek Road that will lessen, hopefully, any of the noise impacts in the area. So does anybody at this time have any questions regarding the noise contour maps, or anything regarding the components of the master plan?
I have one comment. I think recently that we're the fourth or fifth busiest general aviation airport in the United States.
Yes, sir, you are correct. It's the fourth busiest general aviation airport in the United States, yes, sir.
And I think we need to add commercial, we're 33rd in the United States.
Yeah, commercial's not a big component, but we are 33rd in the United States that, that, that does add all commercial service, which is LAX in New York, Chicago, here Atlanta, and, and that's what lists us 33rd as far as the commercial.
And we're the third busiest in Arizona, I believe, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council?
Okay. I'd like to move forward then. The noise contour map would then identify the airport impact zones, and really, for planning purposes, the impact zones is, is key in order for us to understand if there's any potential development in the areas, which areas that staff would certainly recommend not to develop, and then there's areas there that are surrounding airports that could provide minimum impact to the environment, such as noise overflights and any other environmental concerns. So again, this will need to be adjusted as part of the, of the airport layout plan and the master plan since it was June of 2008, since it was last updated. So here's, again, more components regarding the airport, electronic airport layout plan as it depicts the 20-year ultimate development, like I mentioned. The city benefit of the ELP tool is to enable some ongoing and real-time updates, so it's going to be much more efficient than going through the selection process for a consultant to draft a new ALP every time that some of the physical properties at the airport change. And it is a new FAA requirement. Again, for the FAA to distribute opportunities for, for grants, the, this is a component that is required in there that wasn't in the past. It wasn't when the airport had the, the layout plan done in 2008, and, and now it's, it's a new requirement. So the ELP also, including in this is the airport geographic information system, and again, it's a survey that's going to enable the FAA and the owner to collect and analyze all of the property components, subsurface and, and above the surface as well. So this is another FAA requirement, if you will, in all master plans, so all future master plans that airports will be receiving will include both the ELP and the AAGES. The next item is actually the, what we call the runway incursion mitigation. This is, again, just because the city of Prescott was selected as a focused city, the only other focused city is a small one to the south of us, called Phoenix Sky Harbor, but, but Prescott was the only other one, certainly in the region, that could, could qualify for this. And, and again, there's going to be some opportunities through this runway incursion mitigation to receive some discretionary grants for the city council's consideration for improving or developing the airport. So again, this is going to be included in the airport master plan, and the cost for the REM study is including, is included in this existing, in the grant. I think I should add too, that the REM is, is a new program. This is brand-new. I mean, just this year is when it was created. There was a program that was similar to that, that, that just recently expired, but it extended about 10 years. The FAA invested $17 billion, with a B, nationwide to address some of the runway safety action items. So they're assuming that there could be that amount of money, congressional approval accepted, but, but there could be that in the next 10 years as well. And the mayor mentioned if we could have all of that, and I think we'll have to compete for that, but that's certainly something that, that we would be able to, that we'd be willing to be interested in, I believe. So other airport master plan facility requirements, what we, what we see is, is recently the city council did adopt via resolution the terminal building relocation. There's also some focus in regards to runway extension, runway safety zones, land acquisitions for economic development, and a potential relocation of the existing aircraft rescue and firefighting building. All of these items have some elements of grant eligibility included in those as well, as well as the airfield system capacity, and I can just lightly touch on some of those. The system capacity is basically the runway, the runway length, the taxiways, anything that has to do with how an aircraft arrives to the airport and actually departs from the airport. So airside facility, again, facility requirements that would be hangars, any type of mechanic shops, anything that, gosh, we're talking about the aircraft firefighting, rescue and firefighting operation, the air traffic control tower, a lot of those components, and then the landside facility requirements, which is a terminal, which is anything that the public would actually be able to access, general aviation resources. So anything included in there, the airport master plan identifies all of those and lists those for the scrutiny and review of the public and the city council. So here again is a quick map of the airport and what master plan alternatives. The square box you see up on the left-hand corner in a lighter shaded color actually identifies where the city council is identified as far as the master plan, I'm sorry, as far as the terminal location. And so now that that's identified in the airport layout plan, there could be some possible communication with the FAA for some potential grant funding for the development of that. So the other areas that you see on the main map in circles, oblong circles there, are potential airport development sites, you know? If those are identified, again, then there could be some potential for some partnering with the FAA and ADOT. And you also see in blue and in red, if there was a potential extension for the runway to be able to facilitate a larger fleet, possibly a larger commercial aircraft, if you will, for some extension for that. So this is, again, some of the considerations that would be part of the airport master plan. So important aspects of the master plan is this is only a planning document. This does not obligate the city to construct any of the improvements, it does not obligate the FAA or ADOT to provide those grants, but this is just a planning document to ensure that this is what the community wants, and this is what the FAA and the ADOT shares in that vision for, for the Prescott Airport. So again, any proposed improvements will follow normal procurement processes, normal budget, normal planning, any type of, of council approval that is required for any step or phase in this process. So the master plan with the new ELP, the new AAGES, and the REM will become a living document with efficient, timely updates. So it can and will be revised on an ongoing basis. This is something that in the past the FAA has recommended a five-to-10-year lifecycle, but it could be extended beyond that because, again, of these technological updates here. So again, if the city council does approve the master plan application, the city will conduct a request for qualifications to select what we call an on-call planning and an environmental consultant to perform services such as this for up to five years. So that consultant will be selected by a panel, and, and the recommendation will go to the city council regarding who the successor, I'm sorry, who the successor proposer is, and, and reviewing the master plan first. But we know that in the future years, there's going to be some necessary environmental determinations during the five-year period, so that's why there's a recommendation to, to proceed with what we call an on-call planning and environmental consultant. So here's the good news, the master plan funding. The components cost estimates, which include a 5% administrative fee. The original master plan that was proposed in fiscal year 16 was around $350,000. That is the basic plan. One-time electronic airport layout plan was estimated around $200,000 in geographic information systems, which requires a lot of surveying at the airport and, and weeks and, and probably months of data collection is around $200,000. And then a REM study. Again, this is really to investigate all the geographic, I want to say, infrastructure at the airport, and that's estimated around $250,000. So what the FAA has, has discussed with this community is to offer a grant for $1 million to authorize, I'm sorry, to, to, to proceed with the master plan document, knowing that there could be some subsequent additional expenditures as part of that $1 million. We don't anticipate that the original master plan with those three other components would equate to $1 million, but that was the grant that they were willing to provide to us. So again, the FAA's 95% share is, is $1 million, and I want to remind everybody, the FAA, through the AIP legislation, those are dedicated FAA funds, so they would not be going into any community's general fund, they would not be dedicated to streets or any other program other than the Federal Aviation Administration, specific for infrastructure improvements. The ADOT local grant share, if you will, is $25,000, and the city of Prescott, the local share from the airport fund, is $25,000. I wanted to share that because there, there's administrative fees that are grant-eligible, the potential reimbursement to the city for fees to process this master plan and to go through the, the two-year phasing, I want to say for that, could be up to $50,000. So in essence, salaries could be, could be up to $50,000 from the local match of $25,000 for the city. So the master plan schedule, again, if the city council does decide to approve or authorize this application, we will submit that. The FAA has already confirmed that, that they do have the funds available. They would like to, once they receive the application, they would like to process that and, and provide the city a grant, in which case we will proceed with the RFQ, like I talked about, for the consultant selection process, hopefully, to make the recommendation in July of 2016, and then they will commence as part of the master plan with the runway incursion mitigation study. Again, we anticipate this to be a multi-phase, multi-year project, so part of this will be expensed in fiscal year 17, and another part would be expensed in fiscal year 18. So the, in conclusion, where do we go from here? Yes, again, thank you Mayor Oberg for your leadership. The FAA, regional and district officials were very impressed with the communication. They're willing to partner with this community and ADOT in regards to this master plan to have a clear vision of the airport and the development, potential development for the next 20 years. The FAA has dedicated the funds, again, so if, if the city council does approve this, we will proceed with the request for qualifications to select a consultant. And, and again, in July, possibly after that, the city council will have the opportunity to accept the planning grants, authorize the expense of local funds for entering into a contract with a successful planning and environmental consultant. So does anybody have any questions?
Questions, comments from the council?
I have a couple of comments. We're fortunate also in the fact that we get 95% share from the FAA rather than 90. You want to explain that?
Yeah, the city of Prescott is actually dedicated as an economically, yeah, yeah, distressed community, and, and really, it's, it's due to potentially the essential air service, the lack of commercial service that we have up here, as well as the, just the, the revenues, if you will, that, that's received for the airport. So because of the, what they're, again, detailing as an economic distressed city and airport, then they maximize their grant contribution to 90%. On, on average, it's around, I'm sorry, 95%, on average, it's around 90%.
Also, I think we're trying to look at a larger-sized aircraft coming in here to support commercial operations. I think we're looking at a 50-passenger, 49-passenger aircraft.
Yeah, part of the analysis from the master plan is, is to do what they call a design aircraft. So if, if they, again, the, the mission of the FAA is to right-size all of the airports, to make sure that they're not overextending the development, but to make sure that they're right-sizing it. And again, the community, if there's support from the community, the design aircraft could be up to a 50-seat aircraft potentially for Prescott, which is a much larger one than the available 19-seat configuration for commercial service. It could also support the United States Forest Service and their need to increase their fleet availability for their emergency operations as well.
And as, as I understand, if we get the ELP approved by the FAA, that would include environmental impact for any of, anything that we have indicated in the plan, so we wouldn't have to be, continue to do that in the future as we bring other items online?
Mayor, that's a very good question, and environmental impacts are on a per-project basis, if you will, sir, so each one of the projects, if it's a terminal, if it's a expansion of the runways or taxiways, if it's a new fire station, anything that's going to be a potential new development will require an environmental determination. And, and part of the environmental determination could be either through an environmental assessment, which can potentially categorically exclude any future environmental, or a step up, if you will, for a full environmental impact statement, which is a much more lengthy process. But yeah, environmental will be necessary in each and every development on a project basis.
Okay, thank you. No, no more questions from the council, I'll go to the public. I got a thumbs up, don't see any thumbs down, so do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve submission of grant application to Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $1 million for preparation of a comprehensive airport master plan and runway incursion mitigation study for Ernest Air Love Field Prescott Municipal Airport.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Next item?
Item one, or item 3D, adoption of ordinance number 4969-1507 regarding feeding of wildlife. Ordinance number 4969-1507, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title V Police Regulations, Chapter 5-3 Animals and Fowl of the Prescott City Code by adding Section 5-13 through 16 Outdoor Feeding and Protection of Wildlife.
Mayor, council, just very briefly, obviously, we had a discussion on this at a work session before. What this ordinance would do if adopted, it would make, it's fairly straightforward, it would make it unlawful for any person to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly feed or attract wildlife. It would allow enforcement by any Arizona game and fish officer, city Prescott animal control officer, city of Prescott, city code enforcement officer, any AZ post-certified peace officer, meaning Prescott police officer or sheriff's deputy. Based on the discussion last time, I did add into Section D, exceptions, item 5, the water features exception. Other than that, I'll turn it over to you for a discussion and public hearing.
Questions, comments from the council?
One, Mayor.
Councilwoman Orr?
Well, certainly, I believe that we've received a lot of comment, and I believe the comment was very good that we've received from, from the public, or the comments were very good. One of the things that I believe that we've talked about is taking away, and John correct me if I'm, just removing the issue about birds, where it says mammals or wild birds, because the intent of this is certainly not to affect people who are enjoying birding and drawing birds into their neighborhood, it's to talk about helping neighbors who have requested that we help them because in their neighborhoods, they have been affected by those people who are in fact maliciously going out and bringing in large animals, not bringing them in, but attracting them by feeding. So that's the intent of this, is to help those, and we've had also some requests from some rather large neighborhood and homeowner association. So I believe it got turned over a little bit in that because, oh my gosh, we're talking about birds, and that truly is not the issue. So I believe our recommendation is, or at least mine, is that we remove the, the part about birding, or birds, or feeding birds.
Mayor and council, I think that, you know, to address that issue, it's fairly simple in, in Section A4, the definition of wildlife would just end with the word mammals, it would strike out reference to birds, and then in Exceptions D4 would also strike out the end of that clause after tree squirrels. So it would just, it would just accept out the feeding of wild birds and/or tree squirrels without sort of trying to define or limit certain types of feeders, because apparently, I just learned, there are hundreds and hundreds of different kinds of bird feeders, who knew?
Who knew? Who knew, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Palladini.
Councilwoman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier today, I received more communicate, unlike Councilwoman Orr, against this ordinance. But I also, in one of those communications, I don't know if council was able to see though, but it referenced Title 13 of Arizona Revised Statute concerning the size of population of counties, where the, a state statute would kick in and wouldn't even be a municipal ordinance.
Mayor and council, there is a state, in the criminal statutes, Title 13, that makes it unlawful, it's essentially the same language, it's really the same rule or law that's in front of you today. It's, it makes it unlawful to intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly feed or attract or otherwise entice wildlife into an area. Makes it a petty offense, which this, the city ordinance would propose to do, but the, it's limited to counties of over 280,000 population. Yavapai County is 220, 225, give or take, so it's not an enforceable statute in Yavapai County at this point.
Councilwoman Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd feel more comfortable with just authorizing Arizona Fish and Game, do what Arizona Fish and Game do in the state of Arizona, which we're still part of the state of Arizona, we're also part of the county, but let them do their job in the city of Prescott. I don't know why we have to scribe birds and feeders and hangers and all this other stuff, just tell Arizona State Fish and Game, do your job in town, we welcome you.
Councilwoman Cheska?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that we're not swatting a fly with a sledgehammer, and getting, we need to get it right the first time. The worst thing about the possibilities that this brings up is misunderstanding, and I think that we need to word it, craft it, in a way that it's totally understandable and is totally enforceable.
Agreed.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Okay, I'll take public comment. Limit yourself to five minutes, I'll give you a 30-second warning.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, David Parker, Prescott, Arizona. I'm reminded in a situation when I lived in Detroit back in 1968, where they had riots in downtown Detroit. The riots consisted of the people burning their tenements, and come to find out that the tenements were burnt not by outsiders, but by the people that actually lived in those tenements. The reason they built them is, or burnt them, was because they were tired of the living conditions. They were so filthy, the buildings were falling down, there was feces matter all over the house, there was trash throughout the properties. So after the riots and they subsided, a few years later, they rebuilt those tenement houses. After about six to 12 months, the people moved back in, and within that period of time, those same tenement houses were back to the same conditions. There was fecal matter in the houses, there was trash throughout the houses, and the problem was, not that these people were ignorant, but nobody instructed them. No one told the toddler, who had never seen a toilet before, you're not supposed to poop in your pants, you're not supposed to poop in the front yard, you're not supposed to, you're supposed to do it in the toilet. Well, no one told them, no one taught those people how to live in those tenements. So there were people who were irate because of the fact that they rebuilt these tenements, and they wanted to fine these people, they wanted to assess a penalty against these people. Well, how fair is that, the people were ignorant of how to use a facility that they were given? So let's bring that here into Prescott. You're talking about putting a restriction on people for doing something that they may not know that they're not supposed to do. How are they supposed to teach or treat the animals? We know we can't educate the animals. Mr. Blair even said on his radio station one day that on Williamson Valley Road, they put up a sign that said deer crossing. Well, come to find out, he was driving down the road, and the deer were a mile away, a half-mile away, and what good does a sign do? So the question here is, instead of imposing a restriction on people, why don't we take the energies that we have and educate the people about the process of why it is not helpful to have these animals be in our neighborhoods? We have Eric Moore, who owns a bird barn, who'd be happy to give out seminars, I think. You have places like La Fuente's, where they have these people, they're looking for something to do. You have Ken Lane of Waters Gardens, he puts out brochures about what type of plants not to feed or not to grow, because the javelina like to come through, and it's like a smorgasbord salad for them. I think, Mr. Cheska, you know a lot about animals and things, and I think, instead of the approach of making a fine in something, why don't we take the time instead, excuse me, and take the next two or three years, put on seminars, educate the public, instead of making them feel so threatened, because now we have an ordinance that's against them? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Twice in one day. I'm still good. I strongly disagree with this ordinance. In my opinion, this is a perfect example of governmental overreach. It's a step in the direction of the nanny state that exists to our west, trying to legislate behavior, especially common sense that's so rarely common anymore, when you've got some, dare I say it, idiot neighbor who doesn't know how to behave. I mean, if somebody's out there feeding wild boar javelina or mountain lions, I think if you just wait a little bit, natural selection will take care of that. Additionally, I think this generates a disrespect for the rule of law. We've just eliminated 50% of the code enforcement capability in the city, and you're going to add another regulation that's going to require code enforcement? This ordinance will be ignored, and when we ignore trivial ordinances, we end up ignoring serious ordinances. So if anything, maybe the city council can recommend that people maybe take a conflict resolution class at the Yavapai College and figure out how to deal with their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Barbara Jacobson, Prescott. I agree with the gentleman who spoke about education, it is important. I also agree with the ordinance, however, because I have had many people say, I just love to feed the javelina. They don't care, they know, people know. I don't think people are as ignorant as sometimes we think they are, they know, and they know it's not a good idea. This morning, I had deer right outside my window eating my little manzanita. I'm not feeding them, they just come along and eat what's there. It's beautiful to see that, but I'm not attracting them either. And the javelina can be dangerous in the large herds, and they can be dangerous to small children, they can kill dogs, and they don't need to be drawn to houses. And they also don't need that kind of food. I honor what they're supposed to eat, even if they dig up my yard. I think part of, I have a difficulty with the waterfowl. I think we need to also include waterfowl, because we are a good migrating area. I'm not an Audubon society person, but I think if we asked people in Audubon, they would say, the waterfowl should not be fed. There was guys out there the other day with bags of popcorn, potato chips, Cheetos, they don't need to eat that kind of crap, they're going on somewhere else, and they need to eat what's here. Maybe they'll eat all the algae in the lake, and we'll all be better off, who knows? But I think some education, if you won't, if you won't change the waterfowl part, and waterfowl are allowed to be fed, then I think we need a sign or two at Willow Lake and Watson Lake, at least, where we have the no-wake sign, you know, right below that, or somewhere. And I've seen park rangers out there feeding waterfowl, too, I got to tell you, I've made a call on that one. But I think we need a little sign that discourages the feeding of migrating birds, you know, so that would be part of the education, and maybe some other education. I don't think people who want to feed animals are going to go to seminars, because they already know what not to do. But I think at least a sign, and maybe we could get a group in town to pay for those signs, at those lakes where our migrating birds go through quite frequently, might be helpful, because feeding them junk food is really not a good idea, and we have to protect them. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Mayor Oberg and members of the council. My name's Scott Poppenberger, I'm the regional supervisor with the Game and Fish Department that oversees the area here from Prescott to Kingman, and we sure appreciate the time to say a few words, this is Officer Tucker. As the state wildlife agency, we're responsible for managing all the wildlife in the state, and we encourage and support people to interact with wildlife, and we support the feeding of songbirds responsibly. Collectively, we've dealt with this issue as officers in the Prescott area for over 30 years ourselves, and I can tell you from our experience, excuse me, we have a big problem in Prescott with feeding, and we, as an agency, strongly support this ordinance. As a state agency, we also have experience with the results of this ordinance in the counties that have a population over 280,000, and in places like Flagstaff and Cochise County and Hila County. The ordinance and the enforcement philosophy of the ordinance is not directed at the recreational feeder who is attracting some songbirds to view them in their yard. This is a critical, critical tool in our enforcement toolbox to address the issue of the intentional habitual feeder, and there's some great analogies have been spoken about already at this hearing, this gentleman here talking about the idiot neighbor, you know, and that natural selection may take place, and if you feed a javelina, or feed a lion, or you feed a coyote, that somehow there's a perception there that that coyote or lion will take care of the person that's feeding it. Unfortunately, what we've discovered in this is, that's not always the case. The javelina might bite the neighbor's dog, and we have these cases where people attract, you know, huge numbers of javelina, deer, and subsequently their predators to a neighborhood that victimize an entire community through this irresponsible feeding. To address Mr. Lamerson's comment, let the department do its job in the city. We currently have jurisdiction, you know, to enforce laws that exist within the city, but what we lack is state law that applies to Prescott or an effective ordinance to address these specific incidents of this chronic habitual feeder who's really creating a problem. The specific approach that we, as an agency, have taken in Flagstaff, since the ordinance was adopted in Flagstaff in 2013, has been a very progressive incremental approach. To date, and Flagstaff has had a big problem with this also, the department's been involved with it. Zero citations have been issued in Flagstaff since the adoption of the ordinance in 2013, but it does give the department something to work with to address the issue, to focus legal attention on the person that's creating this very dangerous public safety situation. So we strongly encourage you to adopt this ordinance, and list the department on the list of agencies authorized to enforce the ordinance within Prescott. Again, you have a department commitment that we take a measured, focused, incremental, progressive approach in this. We're not out, we're not out to be heavy-handed and, you know, address somebody feeding birds in their backyard. In 2012, we had a woman killed by a bear in Pine Top. Immediately prior to that bear killing this woman, the bear was feeding on a hummingbird feeder. After it killed the woman, it went and fed on the hummingbird feeders around the complex some more. That large carnivore was attracted by irresponsible feeding, okay? So we're not talking about little bitty animals that aren't a public safety threat, we're talking about a very real, very significant public safety threat that exposes all of us to liability and public safety, and a serious threat.
I would just offer, Darren Tucker, field supervisor here in Prescott, I would just offer that the department does have a lot of education and outreach materials that we've offered and made available for years, but without any recourse, our hands are somewhat tied. We'd be more than happy to work with the city in getting some of that already created information into your hands, to partner with you any way we can on that.
Yeah, I'd add to that, outreach and education is nothing new here, and nothing new from the department. We put forth a constant weekly barrage of education to these people who are causing the problem, but believe me, that's nothing new, it's not a new concept. And unfortunately, without the recourse, without an ordinance, without some way to effectively deal with this, education falls on deaf ears to some of the individuals who are really involved with this, okay? That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Wait a moment, does anybody on the council have a question or comment of these two gentlemen?
I have a comment. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I like the new shirts.
Oh, thanks. I don't like the brown myself. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, can I just insert, just to clarify that Arizona Game and Fish is included as an enforcement agency, and that in the penalties section, upon a first violation, it's simply a warning and educational materials, so even the ordinance itself prohibits a citation and a fine on a first violation. If it's a second violation within 60 days, then it can be cited, but then again, there is that law officer prosecution discretion that you don't always have to cite somebody, you can give them a second warning, and that's, it sounds like, is the practice of Game and Fish, so it's in the ordinance.
That's right. We take a very measured incremental approach to this, and, you know, with the reasonable person, that works, you know, it's with the, and if we had time to do a PowerPoint, you wouldn't believe what's out there that we could show you that we've encountered, that we need something to deal with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
You mean only mammals, don't you?
Ma'am, why don't you step on up to the mic, so we can hear what you have to say? Please give us your name and identify where you live.
Yes, my name is Lois Cowing, and I'm a resident of Prescott, and I was very concerned because of what it might do to those of us who love the birds. What I wanted you to know was, do you mean mammals only?
And I can address that, Mayor. The definition of feeding wildlife, wildlife, in sort of the revised version we've discussed, limits it to the feeding of wild mammals, so it strikes out references to wild birds.
Yes, if it's wildlife only, terrific.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Dr. Terrell Shore, I'm a local educator at Prescott College, and I appreciate the opportunity. When we came to Prescott 24 years ago, one of the reasons we decided to live here and buy here was because it's an area that's very rich in wildlife, as is evidenced by the murals up here. I believe that's a mountain lion over there, which, I don't know whether we should have the mountain lion on there or not, but we have a roadrunner, roadrunners are excellent mousers, and my big concern as an expert in community development, as the previous folks said, you know, we're talking about human behavior here, which is a very messy business, and my concern here is, when we have words like irritation, what does that exactly mean? I had a neighbor once, not where I currently live, who was irritated because the hawks, the Cooper's hawks came through our yard, because there were little songbirds there, and Cooper's hawks eat songbirds. So it feels to me like this is possibly a legal slippery slope, even if we say this ordinance is only going to prohibit the feeding of birds, because I can tell you that our realtor sold us the house on the basis of wildlife, and guess what, we have javelina who come through, they have a historic path. If they pause in the front yard where we have hanging feeders, and by the way, I don't know how many of you know about scrub jay behavior, but scrub jays will do this in the feeder, and seeds go out. A year ago, we had a mule deer, which I grew up learning how to shoot in my home state of Wyoming years ago, never seen one there. We have a hanging sunflower feeder, and the mule deer was sticking his We have a hanging sunflower feeder, and the mule deer was sticking his tongue through the very tiny hole that the finches use to give sunflower seeds out of and actually getting some value there. So my concern is that if we first ban certain things, and then my neighbor sees a javelina going through on his way to somewhere else, are we going to involve the, you know, services of Arizona Game and Fish? And by the way, I think there's a lot of information about javelina. We have, as wildlife publishers, published a book on it. We first came here, we heard about these wild howling beasts. I raise swine. Swine, we have 1,000 pounds. They can be very dangerous. When I first saw javelina, my thought was, that's what all of us is about? They can be dangerous to dogs. And I have heard of neighbors having trouble because their dogs are off the leash. And if a dog bounds into a herd of javelina, guess what? They're going to get mostly a wound. They're not going to get killed. So I have concerns about a little overreaction here, which could translate as overreach. And one of the things I love about Prescott, Arizona, is I don't have the government snooping around my backyard to make sure that the scrub jays aren't doing what they do naturally and a seed or two falls to the ground. And then squirrels are okay. You didn't mention chipmunks. I love chipmunks. Are chipmunks okay? You see the problem here. Wildlife, Barbara Woodruff, who was a famous English dog trainer, said, "It's not about training the dog, it's about training the people." And I still think what the city ought to do is encourage education. Arizona Game and Fish does a really good job. And there will always be people. Every morning, I see at least two people run through stop signs. I don't know, we could make it, give the death penalty and eventually get rid of them. But I do think it's overreach. I live in Arizona because I'm able to enjoy my property. And this ordinance, I think, tramples on my constitutional right to enjoy wildlife, which is going to be here no matter what. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, we'll take two more comments.
Hi. John Allen, City of Prescott. I've heard all the comments, and some of them are funny and some of them are correct. I happen to have that idiot neighbor. And several chats with her and her husband, fishing game going out, she still continues to feed. Unfortunately, or fortunately, she hasn't been taken out by natural selection. The javelina chose to go after my wife and dogs. So I don't think education will work if there's not a consequence. If there's not a law on, then why do we have laws against DUIs? Why do we have laws against murder? It's a public safety hazard. And so is feeding of wildlife. If it starts bringing in bears and mountain lions, going out and educating isn't going to save the next child who's out at a music fair downtown and a mountain lion comes through town. It's completely irresponsible and people will not stop unless there is a law. I'd like to second that. I'm all in favor of the bird feeders, the bird watchers, having the water ponds. So I would recommend that the council looks at taking out anything that stops small business. Eric at Jay's Bird Barn has been great in dealing with the situation. And his business and Olson's Grains should not be affected by bird feeders. But my intention in coming to the city council initially last October was, my family was attacked by javelina because my neighbor is irresponsible and nothing can be done to stop her because there is no law. She's been educated. It didn't work. Still doesn't work. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. We'll take one more.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, I want to thank John for the opportunity to meet with him last week. I brought a show and tell, bought a tub full of all different kinds of feeders. And it's like, it is a slippery slope because there's thousands of kinds of bird feeders on the market. And there's thousands of bird feeders already out in our community in use. And so I think that was an important thing to consider.
Most of us know you, but why don't you go ahead and identify yourself?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Eric Moore. I'm a resident here in Prescott, and I do own Jay's Bird Barn. I'm grateful for Steve's input. I'm grateful for Gene's interest and for calling me and seeking more information. I appreciate Billy, your comment. I really do. And I also appreciate what Steve said about swatting a fly with a hammer. Even today, got a phone call at my store. I hear it's illegal to feed birds now. I mean, it's already out there. It's as if it's already happened and it hasn't even happened. There was a study session two weeks ago. But this educating the community, people hear what they're going to hear. And it's unfortunate that we haven't even passed an ordinance. And there are people already in the community that feel it is now illegal to feed birds. And I think that's sad because it's not illegal to feed birds. And I suspect after this meeting, it won't be. My recommendation, and what John and I talked about when we met last Wednesday, was what he suggested already, that we strike the last part of paragraph or section, sentence four in paragraph A where it says, "and/or wild birds," and then to strike the remainder of the sentence in paragraph four of section D, where, after the word tree squirrel, and just strike that. And I did bring copies of that if you want to see it. It's probably not necessary. It's probably pretty self-explanatory. I just want to comment real quickly about the amazing diversity of birds in Prescott. We are fortunate to have Professor Carl Tomoff here at Prescott College, who has been keeping track of all the different birds that have been observed in the Prescott area for more than 40 years. And believe it or not, over 366 different kinds of birds have been documented within a 10-mile radius of the Courthouse Plaza. That's more than 50% of the bird population or species in the entire North America. And they have been seen within 10 miles of the downtown Courthouse Plaza. So Prescott is, it's called species richness. We have an incredible variety of birds. We're blessed to live in this beautiful place. I do want to take exception with some of the comments that have been made. I support this ordinance because I agree with John. I think there needs to be a way to enforce, and I feel Arizona Game and Fish needs the authority to enforce when there are people that are feeding recklessly. I totally support that. If there are people that are putting apples out in their yard or carrots or potatoes to attract javelina to their yard, I just, I don't agree with that. I think that should be outlawed. I really do. That deliberate and reckless attracting of wildlife. But my recommendation is to strike those two segments. I do have some concern about the water issue, and I know you're not taking any more comment. We really haven't gotten to that new paragraph five. And I think maybe that needs to be discussed further at another time, maybe before you pass this motion tonight. I think that water is going to be a slippery slope, too. There's a lot of people in Prescott that have, you know, ponds, water features, bird baths, water in different arrangements. And I just don't know if it's clear enough. So I'll leave you with that. Is there any questions I can answer about bird feeding or birds in Prescott? Because I'm kind of an expert on that area.
Thank you so much for joining in this conversation.
You bet.
And bringing these issues up. So the water features, I mean, the water features are also an exception. Do you not think that that's clear enough, Eric? Because the water features such as fountains, ponds, bird baths, where the primary purpose is decorative or ornamental, I mean, that is an exception.
But what if you're, what if it's a bird bath?
Well, bird bath is part of it. Yeah.
Water can be provided in so many different ways. I guess that's where I'm concerned with the wording, if it's sufficiently clear. I don't know what, Steve, if you have an opinion on that?
There was a gentleman that I was talking to after the study session, and he said, "Well, that's great. I can have a bird bath, but I can't put any water in it."
Oh, no. What is this?
Really? But that's the way he read the ordinance.
Yeah. And I agree, you know, we got to get the wording right. And I agree with Steve, we need to do it right the first time. Because there's already misconception in the community about this proposed ordinance, as if it's already happened. And so if we're not comfortable with the wording tonight, maybe we should take a two-week break on it or something and come back and revisit this and just get the wording absolutely right. So.
I agree.
Thank you. But thank you for letting me address you. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is it the consensus of the council to hold off for maybe another session and make continued changes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mayor, I would just like to thank the fish and wildlife. I appreciate them coming and explaining and because they have certainly a better perception of this, I think, than maybe any of us because they deal with it daily. So I appreciate, and I certainly appreciate Eric bringing his insight. So thank you. It's how we do things well in Prescott. Thank you.
So Mr. Palladini, do you think you have enough understanding direction?
I'll call Eric. He can tell me what water is and what water isn't, and I'm sure he'll give me a good idea. Educated me on bird feeders more than I ever wanted to know.
Did he scare you of birds?
Oh, no.
Well, we want to thank everybody that offered comment on this particular subject. We'll move on to the next one now.
I just had one quick thing to say before we run off. Is it my understanding, and it's chewing on the back of my mind with Mr. Poppenberger there, that the only way that they can enforce a law in the city of Prescott is if we have a law on the books? Isn't there laws in state that?
Not for here.
I guess I just need clarity on that. So in other words, if I have a neighbor that's outright feeding javelina and it becomes a danger to the neighbor, and I have two kids on my back porch, which I did, and I had game and fish come to my house to trap them, and they were irresponsible, you don't have a way to write them a ticket based upon the law that sits today?
Councilmember and Mayor, the state law that makes it a petty offense only applies only in counties that have a population over 280,000.
Okay, that was a clarity idea.
So my read of that is it wouldn't apply anywhere. And you have by county, whether in the incorporated areas or unincorporated areas.
So basically, if I call Game and Fish, they could actually tell me they don't have any jurisdiction because of the law.
And it sounds like that's why, I think you said, Graham County and Hela County, the counties have adopted a similar ordinance because they're smaller populations to have this kind of.
I'd be happy to offer a little on that. Yeah, Cochise County and Hela County. Our only recourse, and we have pursued this in the past, is through the criminal code, Title 13, you know, creating a public nuisance or endangerment violations, which are typically, some of those are felonies, you know? And there isn't this incremental option. So that is truly kind of using the sledgehammer to kill the mosquito, you know? And adopting an ordinance like this does give a much more measured approach, you know, and much more situation-specific opportunity than pursuing it through the criminal code.
Thank you, Mayor, for the time and thank you for the clarification. I think it was needed.
Do you guys, do you guys agree with us that we need to get this right the first time?
Absolutely. Thank you for taking this really important topic under further consideration. I would offer this, there's some great examples out there, the Flagstaff ordinance, the Cochise Counties. This has been wordsmithed to death. I, 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 sorry, I think it's, I think it's very well-written as it is from our perspective who deal with this a lot, you know? I'd offer that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 3E, award of city contract number 2016-2066 to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for the Walker Road Reconstruction Project, State Route 69 to the city limits, in an amount not to exceed $1,099.01. Streets and open space and water.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Arrows, Public Works, and we're here to consider awarding a contract for construction of the Walker Road project, which is from Highway 69 South to the city limits, including the pavement rehabilitation, some drainage improvements, sidewalk improvements, and most importantly, some water system improvements to provide improved water service in that area. The project was started in about 2014 and is budgeted this fiscal year. We have coordinated with Costco, the ARCO station owners, and other potentially impacted businesses in the area during the design process, and we're continuing to do that through the construction process because access to those businesses could be impaired during the project. Night work has already been considered and approved for this project by the council already, so we've already tried to minimize impacts to the businesses. Through our procurement process, the project was bid publicly and a number of contractors submitted bids. Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated was the lowest bidder. We went through our bid review process and everything checked out on the bid. The schedule is about 120 days of construction, and we're looking to award, or not, you're going to award it. We'll get them started next week. So thank you. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments?
Just wondering, is there a contingency on this project?
Yes, there is.
What would be the percentage, would that be?
Typically, our average is 10%, and I don't have that exact number on me right now.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2016-206.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3F, award of city contract number 2016-209 with Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated for construction of the Wickwood Lane Culvert Replacement Project in the amount of $112,112.12 Yavapai County Flood Control District funds.
Thank you. Again, this is for consideration of award of a construction contract to Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated again. This is for the Wickwood Lane Culvert Replacement Project. It's a smaller drainage project that is just off Copper Basin. It doesn't serve too many residents, but it does, it is important for them and also our water storage facility that's off the same roadway. But a couple of years ago, there was a heavy storm in the area and the culvert that was there plugged and overtopped the road, and our crews did go out and make some temporary repairs. And as we started redesign of that culvert, we were waiting for Yavapai County Flood Control monies to come available. They are, and we're proceeding ahead with that funding source. Again, this was a publicly bid. There were about six companies that provided bids on this. And again, Asphalt Paving and Supply Incorporated was the low bid on this particular project. Again, everything checked out with their bid. The construction time on this project is about 60 calendar days. It's a much simpler project, and we're looking to get things going again next week on the project to get the funds spent this fiscal year using the county funding. If there's any questions, be glad to answer them, and thank you again.
Questions, comments? Anything from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2016-209.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Last item.
Item 3G, approval purchase of two each 2016 Ford F-150 regular cab pickup trucks and two each 2016 Ford F-250 regular cab pickup trucks from Peoria Ford using Maricopa County contract number 11121-C, pricing in the total amount of $106,678.25. City contract number 2016-204.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Fleet Services Division, working in conjunction with the Utilities Division, is requesting to replace four older trucks this evening with four, or to replace four older trucks with newer trucks or with new trucks that meet the city's, I'm sorry. Let me start over. I don't know why I'm so tongue-tied this evening. We're asking for four new pickup trucks to replace four trucks that have met our criteria for replacement. Good grief. These trucks are used by wastewater and water employees as they go about their daily duties, going to meetings, going out to field sites, et cetera. The trucks are being replaced with like-kind trucks having similar specifications. There is funding available in the current fiscal year 16 budget for these four trucks in the wastewater fund and also in the water fund. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I think it's just getting too late for me.
Questions, comments?
I have a comment. I'm second.
I just have a question. What happens to the trucks you're replacing?
Councilwoman, what we'll do first is we look at the trucks to see if there's any that we could possibly repurpose within the city. These trucks get used daily, so some departments might have a use for a truck, like Parks has them often, just for something running around the parks. If we can't repurpose them within the city, then they go to auction.
One other quick thing was that I noticed that we're going down to period of purchases. Is that just because of low bid or, I mean, you know, can we not do this?
It's been questioned a lot of times.
Yeah, Councilwoman, we've been utilizing the state contract the last couple of years because it provides really good pricing for us. We haven't gone out locally. Traditionally in the past, on some of the items, from what I understand, local dealerships weren't bidding anything. And so we ended up having to go to the state contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Galpin doesn't, they don't participate because there's no way. These are a great price for these trucks. I know what my Ford F-150 costs, and you can't get four of my trucks for that price.
Exactly.
Any other questions, comments? I've got one. And their warranty cost says perm care. This particular one is 22. This particular one is $22.75. What is that? Is that some kind of guarantee?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear your question.
It's called warranty cost, perm care, six years, 125,000 miles, $100 deductible.
Mayor, that is the warranty we're purchasing with the vehicle. It's been found that on the lighter fleet vehicles, it's really a good bargain for us to go ahead and buy those warranties.
So it's kind of an extended warranty?
That's an extended warranty.
Okay. Any further comments, questions from the council? Anything from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2016-204.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you and good night.
Okay, I always like to close out with a, something from our founding fathers. I think since it's tax time, maybe we ought to just find something that they might have said. One thing that President Washington said is necessary but inconvenient. And I think one person that's a distinguished statesman, he's not from this country, but he has a very funny comment to say, and he says, "We contend that for a nation to try and tax itself in a posterity is like a man standing in a bucket trying to lift himself up by the handle." Thank you. This being is adjourned.